Hello Canyon City, I would like to call this meeting to order, it's now six o'clock. For our regular city council meeting on December 7th. Can we please have roll call?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Haques.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Reed, absent. Councilmember B Smith, absent. Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. Elijah, do we have a Benny Soto as a panelist? We do have, it looks like we have one call in listener if you're Benny Soto, he was supposed So we're not sure about that, so we're gonna move on for right now, thank you Elijah, and we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any council member announcements?
The, we have a KRLN interview coming up, I believe it's December 10th at nine o'clock, I believe.
Would anyone from council like to participate in a KRLN?
When is it?
December 10th.
At nine.
At nine.
I'm working.
I can't.
Timmy's gonna do it?
Thank you councilmember Dennehy, we sure appreciate that. Mayor Protem Hamrick is in charge of reminding you about that. I do want to give a special thanks to all of the members of Canyon City, he really made the virtual Christmas tree lighting a huge success, and there were countless numbers of participants in our community, and it was just a really great way to come together at a time like this, but also some extra thanks need to go to our IT department, Brandon back there, I mean, all three of them were working hard, because it couldn't have happened without them to do this virtually, and Brandon especially worked insanely hard to make sure that it would go seamlessly and without a glitch, and he did an amazing job at that. It took all of their hard work, and also of course the park staff who put up the lights at Depot Park, Macon Plaza, Fifth Street, and at the roundabouts, and they did a marvelous job, and I know they take a lot of pride in spreading that Christmas joy and cheer to Canyon City. And then of course their economic development team, and then today we have here, I can thank you all in person, our Canyon City Police Department, as they were able to launch their operation Blue Santa, and made some remarkable memories for some children this weekend, this last weekend, and being able to deliver presents to some families, with a huge entourage of police cars and the fire truck and Mr. and Mrs. Santa, and it was crazy super fun, and it was an honor and a privilege to be able to be a part of that and witness that, and BJ Serta and Jill Filer, they were the ones that really put that work and organized all of that, so thank you for that, and I know you have more deliveries to do, and we're just so proud of all of you, and we're glad to have our men and women in blue here tonight. It is a very important occasion as we are swearing in our new police chief, John Schick. And we are ready to go ahead and do that, so we're gonna call John up, please. Ryan, would you like to introduce our new chief?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce John Schick, from Gloucester, Virginia, started Monday the 30th last week, and we're very excited to have him here to help lead the department into the future, and we're looking forward to the things you're gonna bring to this community, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, John Schick.
I, John Schick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will never betray my badge.
That I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will honor and uphold.
I will honor and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter, ordinances, laws, and regulations.
The charter, laws, ordinance, and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
The city of Canyon City.
And will faithfully honor, uphold, and perform.
And faithfully honor, uphold, and perform.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Chief Schick, would you like to address Canyon City and the council?
Madam Mayor, thank you so much, council, council members, thank you, Mr. Stevens, thank you. This oath is my bond to you, my bond to the citizens of Canyon City, the bond to these fine people right back here from CCPD. I hope and pray to live up to the needs and expectations of this body, the community, these fine officers and staff, and I will work diligently to move us forward and capitalize on what we've done so well for so many years, and I'm eternally grateful, grateful for this opportunity.
Thank you, I'd like to welcome both you, Chief Schick and your lovely wife Eve, to Canyon City, we're really lucky to have you here, we're also honored to swear you in to serve and protect the community as our new police chief. You've joined a dedicated force of professionals that truly care about the safety of our community and providing excellent customer service. Our staff responds to the public safety needs of the community with the most effective measures available, they are fair, equitable, and compassionate. We recognize that we aren't in a world of cops versus robbers anymore, and I believe that your policing philosophy balances a foundation of traditional policing concepts with innovative and progressive methods to help evolve with our citizens into the future, and that we need to address crime prevention, mental health, transparency, accountability, de-escalation training, use of body cameras, drug task forces, 21st century policing, and homelessness issues, all with a primary focus of ensuring the safety and well-being of our citizens and visitors. As your mayor and city council, we have made an uncompromising commitment to public safety and funding in Canyon City in support of our men and women in blue. So again, congratulations, Chief Schick, and also a hearty thanks and gratitude to all of our men and women in blue in Canyon City, we appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Are there any, would any other councilman, Dolly, go ahead?
I just want to applaud you for being here, first of all, I'm excited to see you in our community, but I also am overwhelmed at the amount of people that came out to support you.
As I am, I am too.
So that is a great start, and I'm excited to see that we're getting off on a good foot, so thank you.
I think we are, and we're gonna continue to move that way, yes ma'am, thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Meisner?
I just wanna kinda reiterate what Dolly says, is that we're gonna have a whole lot of interaction between council and you, but we don't necessarily get the opportunity to interact with the people that are, you know, the boots on the ground, and from myself and council, we appreciate what you do every day, so just keep that in mind when things are difficult, we're behind you.
Thank you.
This is truly overwhelming, most of these folks have been out here working, grinding since about 5:00 AM this morning, and the others are going to work all night, so it's very moving for me to see them here, and I do thank you.
Councilmember Haques?
One of the things I wanna say is we're glad to have you, and those guys back there, the integrity of your department, as it reflects on the integrity of the city, is always out there. We've always had good response from our law enforcement officers. I guess I've been probably one of the biggest supporters with regards to the police department, because I did 27 tough years, it's not an easy job, and it never would be an easy job, and anybody that thinks that the people that put on that uniform have an easy goal, well they don't know what it's like, okay? We're fortunate to have, what I feel, a good staff with the police department, the supervisors that we have, the support teams we have with regards to the people that take the calls to send it to where they have to go, make sure everything's there, and the most important thing, I've always said this, this is the most important thing for those folks back there, just remember one thing, do not let your job jeopardize the fact that you have somebody at home that wants you to come home every evening, or every day, depending on your shift, be diligent in what you do, be cautious of what you do, and make sure that you're able to give home to the ones that support you. Those are the biggest supporters, they're more of a bigger supporter than we are, because without the support of our spouses and our friends and our family, that job would be even tougher than what it is. So take care of them, be careful on the streets, and God bless you all, thank you.
Words of wisdom, thank you councilman.
Yeah, they're still coming, I love it. Councilmember Dennehy?
Well, you know, and I was gonna say that, I'm watching this as more officers keep rolling in, and I wanna start out by saying thank you to all of you, because you know, I've gotten to meet a few of you, I wanna continue meeting more than ones that I have met, you guys are great, you guys do a great job, my son loves running into any of the officers, and Chief, I wanna tell you congratulations, I am.
Thank you, sir.
I think that Canyon City has made a great selection in you, and I just look forward to watching us grow as a community with you and all your officers, you know, being our protectors of our community, and I love the communication that we are having with them, but most of all, guys, just, I just wanna say thank you, thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
And I cannot let this moment go by without also giving a special recognition and honor to Tammy Wagner, our commander, thank you for stepping up to the plate in a time of need to serve as our interim chief, especially during the extra stresses and demands of COVID-19. You served us well, and you served with professionalism, and a skip, or a beat wasn't skipped, or however that is, thank you for keeping us moving forward during this time, we're very also proud to have you serving us as well. So thanks to you all, I think they all deserve another standing ovation for all of our CCPD.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
And we will, do now need to turn to our consent agenda, and I'll turn that over to Ryan Stevens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the regular city council meeting minutes for November 16th, the special city council meeting executive session for November 16th, and the vision committee meeting for November 18th. 8B is to receive and file the 2020 certificate of election results. 8C is to ratify the mayor's signature on the intergovernmental agreement number four for the US Highway 50 pedestrian crossing study and design, that's the supplemental that you received at your dais, and 8D is to receive and file a list of bills.
Are there any questions or comments from council members concerning the consent agenda? Right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda and the agenda. Councilmember Meisner?
Madam Mayor and council, I move that we accept the consent agenda and the agenda as written.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call for a vote?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Haques.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. And now, Ryan, I'd like to invite you to give our administrators' report.
All right, I'm not gonna go into full detail on the written report here, do wanna update council on a couple of other things that we've been working on, obviously Chief Schick is, you know, on the ground now, so we've been working towards his 100-day plan and making sure that we've got preparations in place for that. We have closed our second round of CARES Act funding, that closed on Friday, we reviewed applications for that funding today, we had over $620,000 in requests, so we've gone through that, Brandy Fowler, our grant writer, will be following up with those businesses to ask some clarifying questions, make sure that we don't have any instances where people have received funding from another source, you know, make sure there's no double dipping or anything like that going forward. We anticipate that we'll probably be awarding somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000 of that in funding, you know, we had some that were ineligible because they weren't Canyon City businesses, but the vast majority of them had reasonable requests, and we look forward to funding those requests and helping our business community with that CARES Act funding.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
When you say double dipping, what are you talking about, other city funds, or city-county, other CARES?
It's more about whether or not they've received any other federal funds from CARES Act, or, you know, you can't get the same expense reimbursed multiple times.
Gotcha, thank you.
Councilmember Meisner?
I don't have a question, I do have a question, my light stays on, but I may have corrected that, I was trying to get that fixed.
Yeah, so if you've pressed your button and I don't call you, it might be because your name's not showing up, so make sure to, you know, wave me down. Do you have anything else on the administrators' report?
No, that is, that is it, I'm happy to take any other questions regarding the written report.
Okay, yes, councilmember Meisner.
Yeah, we could use this method, I guess. Questions? I hate to be a pain, but any progress on the water analysis, water meter study?
I will follow up with Bob and get you an answer tomorrow.
I mean, I don't need one tomorrow, it's just, you know, I know everybody's.
I'll get you a status update by tomorrow.
Right, okay. And I thought, well, maybe we'll get to it. I thought we were gonna do a comparison on the lease concept, what was, did we have that discussion?
On the which concept?
About the vehicle lease thing, I thought we were gonna do some comparisons there with.
Yeah, when we bring the actual lease for the police fleet?
Yeah.
Yeah, when we actually bring that project forward, we'll have the comparison for you.
Well, my only, okay. If it's not favorable, you're not gonna bring it forward?
The lease, yeah, no, we wouldn't bring it forward if it's not a good deal.
All right.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions for?
Oh, I do have a question. Can we talk about Rhodes?
Rhodes Avenue?
Yeah.
We're still working on obtaining some of those.
Are we progressing?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yep, we're hoping to have more progress at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I encourage you to keep making progress on that. And I would like to now open a public hearing, and this is for a new liquor license for a hotel and restaurant, the Fremont Provisions, and would invite the city clerk, Cindy, to offer comment.
Fremont Provisions has provided all the required documentation for the liquor license for the location at 507 Main Street, they provided a signed petition showing the desires of the community, and everything else has been turned into the state, and as far as they're concerned, it's approved upon your approval.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Miller.
Thank you for having me.
We're really happy to have you, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and Fremont Provisions and your ambitions with this new restaurant?
I moved to Canyon City just over a year ago, I'm a Colorado native from Breckenridge, Colorado, I've been living primarily in New Hampshire, been in the food and beverage industry my entire life, and run multiple operations, though never been an owner. I was hired on to do this Fremont Provisions project by the Unbridled Company who owns the building, and I'm really pleased to say that we're getting closer. You know, it's an old building, and we're doing our due diligence and making sure that that building is brought back up to code, and working with the historical society and getting everything, you know, really well-preserved, so. I have been primarily an executive chef, but have also taken, you know, larger roles in many of the restaurants, and well-versed in a lot of the needs of running and operating a bar as well.
Okay, I'll now open two questions from council for Mr. Miller, go ahead, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm excited for this new venture downtown. The only thing I have is, when I was reviewing through these documents, two council members had signed on the, the.
Like the petition?
The petition, they're not here tonight, so they don't need to recuse, but did we, did we catch that and have conversations with them?
Don't think we did.
Okay.
At least we sent a Tony chief.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that those conversations are being had.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Mr. Miller, are you familiar with Colorado's liquor licensing laws?
I am familiarizing myself with that through our, as we go through this process, I'm going to further investigate that, as well as require that myself and the entire team, front of the house staff at least, are tip-certified, I found that that's really useful in a restaurant setting, you know, that gives a great educational piece to, you know, not just slinging drinks, but actually taking ownership of that, being responsible, not over-serving people, and just really in general being aware.
When you got your petitions, what was the overall response that you received?
The overall response was very good, there were very few people that were hesitant to sign, in fact, most people, when I was out at least asking people, the people who didn't wanna sign were not from Canyon City or lived just outside the city limits, so it seemed very favorable to me, and I've had a wonderful discussion with a lot of the business owners right in the vicinity that seemed very excited for us to open.
Am I noticed in the plans that you have a bar in the basement, is that correct?
No, it's not in the basement, we have a bar on the main floor, so.
Okay.
The annex building has the existing bar upstairs for the catered events, and we did just add a bar on the main floor at street level.
Have you had consideration to having adequate cameras or other supervision to make sure that proper behavior and nothing illegal would be happening in some of these spaces that might be?
Yes, we, we don't have cameras yet, we installed the security system first and foremost, and something that was important to us was to be able to have, you know, contractors have access and track that, but in moving forward, our plan is to have certainly cameras over the bar area, cash register area, and as well as, if it's allowed, I don't know, I'd have to check with, you know, city, but that main, that main entryway, just so we can see who's coming and going.
And what I would probably do is have someone from CCPD, they have some specialists that does environmental, you know, awareness, and that they can come and give you some great suggestions for that, and that's something we have done with some of the other bars as well, just to make sure that we're above board in preventing criminal behavior, particularly in, you know, drug deals or things like that, that have had a history of happening in our bars before, and we definitely don't want that to happen in your new establishment, and also would like to encourage that it's always okay to call our police if you ever have any concerns about anything whatsoever, that it's okay if you have a long list of police calls, I don't think you ever well, but it shows that you're being proactive if you ever have concerns, that they're there, and they're there to be friendly and to be helpful, and just even sometimes having a presence there is a good thing, you wanna have good relationships.
Absolutely.
With them. Councilmember Meisner?
Again, welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck, hope things work out, and I just wanna reiterate what the mayor's stated, that over the last couple of years, we've tried to reiterate the necessity for video evidence of whatever may be the case, and cooperation with the police department. I realize that's almost a catch-22, where you have an instant, you call into the police department, and then it suggests over time, if you've got a lot of calls, that you've got an unruly crowd there, but we've had hearings where owner-operators have suggested that it's probably better not to call the police, and that's kinda not going down the right road.
Yeah, I wouldn't agree with that either.
Okay, thanks, good luck.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Miller, do you mind telling us a little bit about your menu? I've had a lot of questions about that, and when you plan to open your doors.
We're gonna open the doors as soon as we're ready, hesitant to put a date on it, because, especially with that old building, we keep creeping forward, and then there's a little setback, whether it's, you know, plumbing issue we just had to deal with, or, you know, just even waiting on kitchen equipment to be delivered at this point, it's 2020 after all, and you never know what to expect. As far as the menu goes, my background has been a very community-focused approach to food and creating local supply chains, so I'm hoping that within the next few years, I'll really have a huge portion of the menu being sourced locally, and, you know, using that term locally doesn't just mean Canyon City to me, you know, that means, you know, probably in a 200-square-mile radius is what typically chefs would consider local, so I have had the good fortune to work with many farmers before and see the impact that a restaurant has on purchasing food from, you know, say somebody who's right down, right down the street, that really does help boost the economy, I really love the way it brings together a community, I think one of my favorite things about food is that it's that great equalizer, right? Everybody comes together and has a great meal, and there's something magic about that, so. My menu is gonna be based on, you know, some of my regional offerings, and my own take on, you know, even something as simple as a green chili pork that I do, just a little bit differently, but that's where, being a chef, I get to kinda be an artist as well, and express myself, so, very much so into making things from scratch, everything from ketchup, mustard, baking the burger buns, breakfast items, you know, so on and so forth, so.
I'm excited about all of that.
It'd be a pretty wide offering when we really get going, I'm gonna start small, and then really see what the good folks of Canyon City are looking for, you know?
All right, well, again, I'll reiterate, congratulations, best of luck to you, we can't wait till the doors open and to support your new business, and also thank you and Unbridled for bringing an old building up to code and bringing it back to life.
Our pleasure.
We're very, very happy to see that happen.
Yeah, it's a beautiful building, and it's really coming along, I can't wait for everybody to see it.
Absolutely. I would now like to close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve. to approve the new liquor license. Councilmember Dennehy.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve the liquor license for the hotel and restaurant, Fremont Provisions.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council, and congratulations, Fremont Provisions.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Good luck. We're looking forward to seeing you.
Can't wait. Thank you, guys.
Right now, item number 11A is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 25, series of 2020, repealing Resolution Number 24, series of 2020, entitled "A Resolution of the City of..." The resolution of the City Council of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, repealing Resolution Number 24, series of 2020, and summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2021 and ending on the last day of December 2021.
Mayor and members of council, this resolution repeals the budget that was approved last time. Because the Black Hills franchise was not approved, we did pull the revenues as well as expenses out of that budget. Rather than cutting any particular project completely, we cut funding and reduced funding on the sidewalk project, the alleys projects, things like that, typically that are funded by the Black Hills franchise or projects in the right-of-way.
Is there any discussion by council? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion. And you don't have to read the whole thing. Councilmember Dennehy.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25, series of 2020.
Second.
Start that again. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25, series of 2020, repealing Resolution Number 24, series of 2020.
And I'll second it again.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Our budget for 2021 has now passed. Thank you to this and to you, Ryan, and to our staff and Tammy for the work that...extra work that has had to go into it, considering all that's happened in 2021.
So because that's a resolution, we only need one reading?
We're now on 11B, introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 26, series of 2020, entitled "A Resolution Leaving General Property Taxes for the Year 2020 to Help Defray the Costs of Government for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2021 Budget Year." I'm Ryan. Please give us a report.
Yeah, and we will have a staff report from Tammy Nordike, our finance director.
Welcome, Tammy.
Good evening. You should have received a revised copy of Resolution Number 26, series of 2020. And we did receive the assessed valuation in today from Fremont County. And so with that, our mill levy is not...will not change. So our general mill levy is 2.887 mil, and we will have an additional mill levy for recouping the taxes abated and refunded of .014 mil. And it is anticipated that that mill levy will bring revenue of $446,879 to be collected in 2021.
Any questions from council? Or Tammy? Councilmember Meisner?
I don't even want to ask this question, but I will. So the cap relative to Tabor is on the total property tax collected. Is that...obviously, I'm going to say is the question, but that's the final solution. Is that $400x thousand dollars is the figure that can't change? Is that the case?
That is correct. The mill levy of 2.887 cannot change. I did run the calculations. I do compare to see what our mill levy, our normal mill levy collects, and then we also compare it to what Tabor would allow us to collect and what the 5.5 limit would be. And even if we were not in a Tabor timeout, we would still only be able to do the 2.887. The other mill levy calculations actually were higher, but we cannot do that without a vote of the people.
So it seems like in our years past, we've usually just kept everything the same. We haven't had to do an extra mill levy?
No, every year, there is that tax abatement mill levy that's in addition to our normal mill levy.
So what's that?
I remember doing this several years, but I always thought it was the same as the year before, but it seems like this year, it sounded like we had a loss.
It can adjust, you know, based on how many property taxes were abated.
And this year, we're able to recoup $2,264 in abated taxes, where I think for our budget year 2020, we only were able...the abated taxes were less than $1,000. So that's why you would see a difference there.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Gonzalez?
And it may be...I don't know. So at the...hi, Tammy. At the top of the certification of tax levies for non-school governments, there's a number of $15,668, and then on the line below, and I don't know if this is just coincidence, but the numbers are so similar that I wondered if that was a typo, because it says 15...or 154...I'm sorry, $154,668. And then on the next line, line G, the last three numbers are 68.
So you're looking at the certification of...that we sent in today as an attachment?
On Resolu...
Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm pulling up the correct document.
Yes.
So give me a moment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Second page in on the amended. So on our amended, it's the page after the resolution, the documents that are attached.
154006. Okay, I see what you're saying. Let me pull up the...
You're asking about that figure and what other figure?
The one...
It's the 068.
So it's 068?
There is a transposition on that certification. I will get that changed before we submit it to the county.
Okay.
Good job, dolly.
I just have to be looking. That's all. I'm not good with numbers at all.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
And just as a note on that, the...next year, we will expect to see those two numbers be different because of our tax increment financing authority that will change those two numbers, essentially. Those numbers are...if there is a tax increment financing entity, which we have now, such as an urban renewal authority, those numbers will be different.
Yeah, and those numbers change on an annual...well, every other year, the biannual assessment, I believe. So, yep.
Where's that going to happen, John? On this calculation here? On these two numbers here, on the page that Dolly was looking at. So of course, towards the top, not the...on this page here, Jim? Can you see this page? So these two numbers. And there's a footnote towards the back. You see a footnote reference there, and that's where that takes you to the...next to the last page. So which of those two numbers did we decide is right?
The 068 is the correct number.
Any other questions from council? If not, I would like to entertain a motion.
I just have a technical question from John's question. And you're saying that that's going to impact that figure next year? Why wouldn't it this year? Because we don't know what that... This is a backwards look, not a forwards look. It's for '21.
Yeah, it has to do with biannual assessment and the overall assessed value. So this is what the mill levy is based off of for 2021 calculations.
I would still like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Resolution Leving...or I'm sorry, Resolution Number 26, series of 2020, with the changes made on...do I need to say that? On the attached documents?
No, because it's not...
That's not part of the resolution.
No? Okay, so just Resolution Number 26, series of 2020?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. I'm now on item C, 11C, introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 27, series of 2020, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Clarifying the Vacation of an Easement on the Platte for the Gold Canyon Subdivision."
And we will have a staff report from the city engineer, Adam Lancaster.
Welcome, Adam. We'd like to hear a staff report.
Sure. So we recently were contacted by the property owner of this lot.
And Adam, can you try and speak a little bit more into the microphone? We're having a hard time hearing you.
How's this?
There you go.
Is that better?
Way better.
All right, sounds good. So we were approached by the new owner of this lot in Gold Canyon, who's a builder, and they were having trouble with getting clear title, because there was a easement, an abandoned easement for a water main across the property that was intended to be vacated with the original plat. But because of the wording that was on the plat, it was not very clear what the intent was. And so to clarify that and clear up the title for this property, we need to do a vacation via this resolution to make it clear that that's been done.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Yes, I just would like to make sure that I'm clear on this. So this easement that was noted was in favor of the city and not some other entity?
So what it was, was an old water line that had went out to the old zinc plant across...all the way across the Gold Canyon property and then into the Dawson Ranch area. And so there's no physical use of this at all anymore, and the entities that used it are long, long gone.
I'm up for the attorney.
But it was a water line that was owned and controlled by the city for that area.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Meisner?
Madam Mayor and council, I move that we approve Resolution Number 27, series of 2020.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Adam. I'm now for item 11D, introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 28, series of 2020, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, to Adopt the Employee Handbook."
And we will have a staff report from our human resources director, Ivy Morris.
Hello, Ivy. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. So you should have received a copy of the revised handbook, which includes the changes that we discussed at the November General Government Meeting. If you'd like, I can go through those changes.
Ivy, if you would, please.
Sure, I will. So Section 408, on page seven, the use of cell phones while driving, we added an exception to allow the use of cell phones while driving for sworn officers who are on duty, and we removed the reference to GPS. In Section 501, employment classification on page eight...
I just wanted to say that it was probably good, I think it was Meisner who had suggested that change, because I actually literally saw a city employee talking on their cellphone while driving this week. I will not say who it was. All right, sorry, Ivy, go ahead.
We can talk offline. Okay, so Section 501, employment classifications on page eight, we clarified that the duration of a temporary full-time or temporary part-time employee is for the duration of six months or less. In Section 506, professional development on page 10, we added language to clarify that employees will be compensated while attending approved training. Section 602, attendance and punctuality on page 13, we revised the three-day no-call no-show to address the extenuating circumstances. So it now reads, absent extenuating circumstances, any employee who fails to report to work for a period of three days or more without notifying his or her supervisor will be considered to have abandoned the job and voluntarily terminated the employment relationship. Section 604, disciplinary procedure on page 13, we added language to address noncompliance with policies and procedures. So it now reads, employees shall comply with the city's policies and procedures, standards of behavior and performance, and correct any noncompliance with the policies, procedures, and standards, and that failure to do so may subject the employee to discipline. For Section 701, paid time off on page 19, we revised it from requiring two weeks notice...we revised it from requiring two weeks' notice of vacation request for 40 hours or less to as much advanced notice as possible for requests of 40 hours or less.
Where's that at? 701?
Then the final...go ahead.
That was 701?
Yeah, 19, page 19.
Correct.
Go ahead. I'm reading. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ivy.
Okay. Then the last thing I changed, and it was actually an addition under Section 811 on employee benefits, we added a notation about the new Roth IRA benefit that we just introduced to employees.
Thank you, Ivy.
Sure.
Any additional questions from council or comments? Councilmember Meisner? Yeah, they're not supposed to be on their cellphone while driving a city vehicle. Is that right, Ivy?
That's correct.
It says texting. Does it need to be texting and talking on a cellphone while driving?
Cellphone usage is whenever possible. Texting is prohibited.
Okay.
Right, correct.
Are you satisfied with that, Councilmember Meisner? Are you satisfied with that, Councilmember Meisner?
Says texting while driving on city business? I guess so, now that I read it out loud, it makes sense, okay. I had to read it out loud in order for it to-
I think it's, I think it's right.
Yeah, I do too.
If acceptable, I would like to entertain a motion.
I think it looks very appropriate when I look at, you know, my, my handbook, where I'm at right now, and in previous jobs, I, I think it looks very professional.
Yes, I think it's been very, I know Ivy's worked really, really, really hard on this. And our attorneys too, I'm sure. Still entertaining a motion?
It doesn't, does Ivy, this is Meisner. I appreciate all your work and effort, but I would at least request, and I probably should direct this through our administrator, but I'm not going to do that. Whenever we have a large document that has changes between first and second sessions, I personally would appreciate some kind of cover letter that would identify those changes so that I don't have to sit down with this copy that you've given me on Wednesday night and compare it word for word with the copy that, that I had a month ago, because I can't remember exactly all the changes that we did. So any documents, which probably would be minimal from your part, I would at least appreciate maybe a cover letter saying, hey, these, this is the quick changes we made.
And I would support that.
Okay, thank you, I've made a note of that.
Councilmember Dennehy, would you like to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve on first reading, resolution 28.
Second?
There's been a motion and some seconds.
Couple of seconds.
Any discussion? Then I will call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council, thank you, Ivy.
Thanks Ivy.
Thank you, Catherine.
Catherine.
And all involved.
Everybody, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11E, you noticed the last council meeting of the year, we always have a ton to finish up. Okay, item E, introduction and adoption by title only of resolution 29, series of 2020, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving the Cooperation Agreement Between the City and the Canyon City Area for Reinvestment Expansion."
Mayor and council, this, this is the cooperation agreement with the Urban Renewal Authority that establishes the seed fund of $500,000 to start urban renewal projects, as well as establishing the ground rules and the, the shared staff for that relationship. You will also see this, as well as the rest of the Urban Renewal Board, again on Wednesday for approval under the Urban Renewal Authority itself.
And I would like to point out that this Wednesday, we are having our next URA meeting, where we will be meeting to approve our first project or agreement with the, with Unbridled for Hotel St. Cloud. Councilmember Gonzalez?
So, I've just had a few questions since we've started this discussion. And one, one of the biggest questions that has come up is, where did the initial $500,000 come from? I just want to get it on record.
Yeah, so, so this would be an inter-fund loan, similar to what we did with 2A. So this would be money that would be coming from our perpetual fund for the cemetery, and then would be repaid back to that perpetual fund.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Meisner?
Page four. Item 4.2. The last two sentences. The second from the last sentence, and Catherine probably has to help, but I don't, I don't understand where it says, "and its employees on long-term, not temporary basis." What does that mean?
All right, I'm, I'm reading. So I, I think it's just, it's meant to, it's meant to state that like, these are the long-term employees of the city, and, and they're not being hired for this specific purpose. So it's not a temporary assignment that these are employees that, at least the city intends to have a long-term relationship with, or has a long-term relationship with.
If you say so.
She does.
The last sentence. Can I keep going?
Yeah, sure.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, if she's, that's why I ask her. The last sentence seems to be, to be conflicting with everything else. It, it seems to be saying that the employees need to consent, or would consent, to co-employment. And co-employment, to me, means that they work for the city and for the urban renewal. And I think the agreement's very clear that they don't work for the urban renewal, they work for the city. But co-employment would seem to suggest otherwise.
And we can clarify that to, to, you know, state that they are willing to perform these duties on behalf of the authority, and, and remove that term, co-employment. If you think that would assist-
Well, it sounds like that statement in itself is conflicting with your typical position of staying out of employee affairs, and that that should be an administrative duty. Because if we have an employee that says, based on the contract, I don't want to do that, then the contract becomes the negotiating tool versus their supervisory responsibility with the city administrator.
Oh, no, I would not interpret it that broadly.
Well, you wouldn't, but the court might-
I think it's just a representation that they understand they're going to do this. But I don't think it gives them any third-party benefit to say, well, I'm not going to perform those duties anymore.
Why does it say consent?
What'd you say, I'm sorry?
Why does it say consent?
Because it's just a representation that they're agreeing to perform these duties for the authority. For this percentage of time, in Exhibit A, they're gonna, they're gonna perform these duties for the authority. But they're not a party to this agreement, they're not a third-party beneficiary of this agreement. Their refusal to perform duties on behalf of the authority is simply an employment matter between the city and themselves. It's not going to, it's not going to throw this agreement into, into turmoil. I just don't think it can be read that broadly.
Well, I'm not questioning whether it would throw this agreement into turmoil, but it seems to me like this agreement is stating that they have to consent to it, which is getting into personnel matters.
No, it's a representation that they do consent to it, not that they have to. So we can take that out and, and take all that language out if it's, if it's-
I personally don't like it.
Do you recommend taking out that entire last sentence?
My recommendation would be to take that out of there, because I, I realize the, the attorney disagrees with me, but I think it's conflicting with the previous opinions that we received legally, that employment issues need to be handled administratively.
Can I, can I speak on that, though?
No.
Yes, Dolly, please.
Jim said I couldn't, so I'm going to anyways. So because it, because it is an authority, though, they, they, they kind of have to consent to doing that job.
So what if they don't?
Then someone else has to do it, correct? I mean, is, isn't it aligned so that somebody else gets paid or gets that-
Yeah, but you can't use another employee. You can't use another employee because they're not listed on Schedule A. So those people on Schedule A, they don't, they really don't have an option.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, this falls under, you know, other duties as assigned.
Right.
And, you know, we would expect the, the employees, I mean, the, the work that they're going to be doing for the authority is aligned with the work that they do with the city.
Yeah, so, okay. But can that be written in-
I think it's just a representation to the authority that, hey, authority, the city has, you know, spoken to these employees, and, and they're aware that they're going to be required to do these duties for the authority.
So would it, would it not be more safe to possibly put specific job duties per the authority into their job description?
No.
No, that, then you are creating-
Yeah.
An employment relationship between the authority-
Oh, I guess so, I guess that does, okay.
And, and I would note that, that the, the factor that integrates these issues that we're talking about is that the city administrator is the executive director. And so the, for, for all practical purposes, you know, administration by the executive director essentially is the same as administration by the city administrator. So hypothetically, we get a new John Doe, and the new John Doe is anti-URA, and says, I'm not going to do that. Now you have to take a personnel matter and make a decision on it based upon this agreement.
Why would he hire someone who is anti-URA?
Doesn't matter.
I don't think it's based upon this agreement. I think it's based upon the city administrator being the supervisor of John Doe and saying, you know, I require you to perform these job duties for the authority. I don't think it's based upon this agreement. I mean, it is in general, but I don't think that language has as much meaning as, as, as perhaps you're equating to it.
Well, I'm just reading it as it is in black and white.
I know, but I think its purpose is just to let the authority know and be assured that these employees are aware that they will perform duties for the authority.
But that's not what it says. It says that they're going to give their consent.
No, so that-
Just take it out of there.
The employee, just to strike the last sentence, right? Is, is that okay, Catherine?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, well then, if there aren't any further questions, I would recommend a motion with an amendment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve resolution 29, Cooperation Agreement Between City and Urban Renewal Authority, amending-
4.2.
4.2 to strike the last sentence.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for vote?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
You know, I'm going to vote no, because I, I kind of, every time we go through, that's why we have the attorneys look at everything we do. And then every time something comes up, we're always second-guessing them and everything else in there. That's their job, that's why we hired them. And if we have an attorney that doesn't know their job, why do we hire? So for that purpose, you know, I, I can't see us always, always, because one little word upset somebody, that we want to change everything, so I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Meisner?
I'm going to vote yea.
Mayor pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council, the resolution passes. We are now moving on to second readings. And this is a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 21, series of 2020. Catherine, because it's a second reading, do I need to read the whole thing?
No, you don't.
Okay. And just in short, this is appropriating the money to various funds and spending agents, agencies. Ryan?
Yeah, and I know we did have a couple changes on here, and go back to Tammy Nordike for update on the staff report for this.
Before you, you have the second reading of ordinance 21, series of 2020. Based on our resolution 25, that was approved earlier this evening, the amounts in this ordinance have been changed from the original resolution 24. There were decreases in general fund in the expenses, in conservation trust, quality of life, the water fund, and stormwater fund. The biggest change was in general fund, which had a reduction of expenses of $683,770. Conservation trust fund had a $60,000 decrease in expenses, and that was from us getting awarded a grant, and it did not require us to have any cash match. So that was, that was a huge plus. We actually had increase in expenses in our quality of life fund, because we recently were notified of grant awards, and we were able to get those incorporated into the 2021 budget. Those changes were over $328,000. We had a minor decrease in the water fund, basically from some changes that came from general fund. It trickled down to the water fund as well. And then also in stormwater, there was a reduction of approximately $15,000 due to the updating of the lease payment from what we had it estimated at to what the actual lease payment will be. Are there any questions for me?
Councilmember Meisner?
Yes, Tammy, I, I would just like to reiterate the same issue that I mentioned to human resources, in, in that, when you give us, when there's a change on a second reading, I personally would appreciate maybe some kind of a, a very short cover letter that identifies what those changes are, so that I don't have to try to go back and compare old documents with new documents.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Any other questions or comments from council? Like to, if not, entertain a motion? Mayor pro Tim Hamrick?
Madam Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance number 21, series of 2020, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for vote?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Tammy. And we are now on second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 2020, or 20, ordinance 22, series of 2020. And this is concerning the new VAC truck. I want to make sure that in the agenda, it says CAC truck, but it's a VAC truck, in reapproving the master lease for purchase agreement.
And this, this is a second reading, there are no additional changes. Staff would recommend approval on second reading.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2020, or, I did the same thing you did. Ordinance 20, number 22, series of 22, on second reading.
I second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Excited for that VAC truck. Okay, now, second reading and adoption by title only, ordinance 23, series of 2020. And this one is concerning the water rate schedule.
Again, this is a second reading, we've not received any public comments, and again, staff would recommend approval on second reading.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Dennehy?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we pass ordinance number 23, series of 2020, on its second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Meisner?
What was the percentage? Did we settle on three?
It was 3% for the water rate, yes, sir.
Okay. I don't like increasing anybody's water rates. We chose 3% knowing that we've got to try to make some kind of progress versus doing nothing. Ideally, that probably should have been six, but given the situation as things are, we settled on three to try to take a step forward and minimize the impact to people that are having a difficult time.
Thank you for that reminder. I'm Councilmember Meisner. And I'd like to call for a vote now.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading and adoption by title only, ordinance 24, series of 2020, and this is for the base rate for stormwater management fees. for the base rate for stormwater management fees. Also, a second reading, minimal increase.
Yeah, again, this is a second reading, no additional public comments, and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Sure, I did the last one.
Well, let's do Councilmember Meisner this time.
Go ahead.
Oh, did Dolly want to do it?
No, go ahead, it's an increase, go ahead.
Well, Tammy wants it. Madam Mayor and council, I move that we approve Ordinance 24, series of 2020, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call for Councilmember Meisner.
Again, nobody likes increases, but this is not nearly what it should be, to at least try to address stormwater needs, and as we get upset with these changes, we need to recognize that stormwater needs to be a regional issue and not a city limit issue.
Thank you again, Councilmember Meisner, I'll now call for the vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. We are now on our final item for the year of 2020. It's been quite the year, has it not? This is second reading and adoption by title only, Ordinance 25, series of 2020, and this is the rezoning of certain real property within the city of Canyon City for Lot 1 and Four Mile Ranch.
Again, this is second reading, I spoke to the city planner earlier today, at that point, we had not had any additional comment on this, and staff would recommend approval on second reading.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we pass Ordinance Number 25, series of 2020, on its second reading.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. And we do have a comment from Councilmember Meisner.
Madam Mayor and council, I would request that in the near future, we at least bring the topic of recycling up at probably a general government, I don't care, so that council can at least make a decision on whether we should direct staff to pursue whatever alternatives are out, not only for just Canyon City, but whether it's, you know, co-op in with Pueblo, co-op in with Colorado Springs or something, but we just can't let the whole recycling thing just drop. I mean, we may not see any effects of it today, but I'm telling you, it's going to happen, and it's not going to be in the city, unfortunately. Most of those problems are going to wind up impacting the county and the BLM and the US Forest Service in terms where people are going to take their trash and take their appliances and dump them. So I think we have a community responsibility to try to address it.
And to piggyback off of what Jim is saying, I've talked with people who, they want to be part of a recycle program, it's a community effort that people really want to do, and they feel like there's an education piece missing without it there. So a generational piece that might be missing as we move away from recycling in our community, as other communities are still doing it. So I thank you for bringing that up, Jim.
It's not a new concept, and...
No, it's not.
We're not going to make money on it, I mean, it's going to cost us and the county. I think overall, without speaking for the commissioners, but I will, I think the commissioners are favorable to trying to find a solution. I think the BLM, the US Forest Service may be having some funding-type grants available to help with the situation, knowing, pay me now or pay me later. So I think there's some opportunities there, and I think both of our local trash entities are entrusted, to what degree, who knows? And I think that potentially Pueblo and Colorado Springs entities would have some interest, so I think there's some opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Meisner and Gonzalez, and I think we agree, we definitely need to address this. We, I mean, even the program that we had is actually quite a bit behind what most communities are doing. But also, just want to end with a reminder, we do have general government, it's the end of the year report, even though we have been dominated by COVID, we have accomplished quite a bit, and it'll be exciting to celebrate some of those things and review and acknowledge the accomplishments that have been made in 2020. We also have the URA meeting afterwards, and other than that, just want to wish you and Canyon City a Merry Christmas, and this meeting is adjourned.